To this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our meeting agenda statement, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. And we are going to welcome the IPS Drone Club. Mr. Gruber, do you want to do introductions for us?
No, I'll do the intro. Usually I get up here and I talk and I've been saying about the great things going on at IPS. Today, we're going to show you the buzz about our new club.
Okay.
That's the cover for their place. So did you catch the buzz, Mike?
Yes, got it.
This is our drone club and I want to, you know, let's introduce ourselves, our drone club attendees and members. So we'll start off with...
I'm Colson Greer.
Colson Greer, who's your teacher? Who's your favorite principal?
Mr. Greer.
Good, good, good. And where are you?
Arianna.
Arianna, let's keep it subtle. Arianna, what grade are you in?
Fourth.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Stevens.
And who's your favorite art teacher?
Mrs. Stevens.
Oh, that's good. All right, who do you have here? Kelly Matar. What grade? Who's your teacher? Favorite math class?
Mrs. Stevens.
Mrs. Stevens, very good. Okay, so next one at least.
I'm God.
God Harrison, what grade?
What?
Who's your teacher? And who's your favorite teacher?
Um, Ms. Stevens.
All right. So this, at the end of last year, we used to have football and basketball enrollments and our enrollment was declining over the last five or six years. So Mr. Gruber came to my office, he's at the end of the year exit meeting, and I said, I said, "Mike, what club could we, we need to, we need to revision and do something different. What could we do?" And we were throwing around ideas and he brought the idea of a drone club. And I said, "Okay, your homework this summer is to research this, reach out to some schools and things like that." And over the summer, Mike did all that. He did all the homework. He looked at, researched different drones that would be appropriate for our age students and them developmentally. And then, we needed the money to do this. So we reached out to our PTO and we pitched this idea to them. We talked about how many sessions we can do, what the weeks would look like, all those different things. And they're the real reason we're able to have this drone club because they helped us tremendously with the purchasing of these drones and we're not cheap. And Mike might be able to share the, you know, the price of them. But this has been a game changer for us. I was talking to people earlier today, we already have school districts reaching out to us saying, "How are you able to do this at the elementary level?" So I'm going to let Mike kind of take over and talk about the club and the format. As you tell, Mike came right from the baseball field, just as dedicated. So Mike, I'll let you kind of take over.
Yeah, so we ended up buying the brand of drones, DGI, branded drones. This is something that I kind of got passionate about where we needed to buy something that was kind of top level, really nice drones. Growing up, my father bought me a drone one time. It was a hundred bucks. I was maybe twenty years old when he bought it for me. We took it outside, you'd fly through a little bit and it would, just the wind would take it. It couldn't go anywhere unless you were experienced with it. So I make sure that, we talked about what type of drone we wanted and these are, they're great. I mean, you read about drones and what high-level professionals are using and they're using this brand. These drones will hover, fall down, or they can get themselves into a bad situation. They are able to kind of stop, the drone will stop for them, and then they're able to get themselves out of the situation. We do it for six weeks. We start in the art room. The first week is kind of like a control of flying where we learn the controls, landing, hovering, takeoff. Week two, we start doing figure eight flying in the art room. And here are the next slide, I think I have, kind of like what we do there. So the art room, I set up these cool noodles and they take off, they learn how to figure eight through the cool noodles, come back to themselves and land. So they're learning kind of simple maneuverability at that point. We're trying to teach them that a smooth flight is best, where you can tell when their gift getting started, it's going like this the whole time. And by the end of the class, they're able to navigate and through there with how it didn't get really jerky. Once we graduate from figure eight, we go to the gym and we work on actual course-style maneuvers there where we're setting up a little bigger of the course, where they're going through loops in figure eight style. And their favorite thing is, what's your favorite thing to dance with drones?
Hallway hop.
The hallway hop. So we go around and we'll do the whole loop of the school. They're taught to stop when teachers are coming in the hallway. They're working on navigating, getting themselves in and out of the hallways. They're working as a team. Two of them will go down to a corner. They are helping each other around corners, kind of a teamwork effort there. And then, this group here, we just started this year doing, or this group here, the second session, a drone with us, where they're working on a couple trial runs the last week. And tomorrow is our official weekend day. This is our trial run here. One of our students participated in it last week, kind of gave a feel of the course, started to work on, kind of working a little bit quicker with it without being out of control with their drone. They got to go through a series of hoops, figure eights. We usually have about two of these going through the course at a time. One will start while the other one gets about half turned and the second one takes off. And they're starting to get their, a little bit of their competitive use to fully do it where they're trying to beat their own times, is our goal. We get one time from them and then we're trying to complete part-time the second time around. And now I'm going to start a little chart this morning where they all want to try to set the course the same way, here after here and see what time this goes. Yes. What are drone clubs?
How many students do you have?
Uh, first session we had thirteen and our second session we had a lot.
And there's a, I'm assuming there's a maximum number of kids you could have?
Yeah, we have six drones. I try to keep it two per, once, or one drone for two students, maybe one for three if we're trying. But six drones in the art room.
Yep, yeah.
It's pretty wild, so.
First session, we filled up real quick. Second session, we wanted, knew we'd be able to have first days, and we have a couple. I think we have three or four that are doing it for a second time in the spring. So, I got a few questions for you guys. You guys ready? All right, so what are some careers and jobs that you guys have learned about that deal with drones?
I think I would use a drone camera to like visualize landscape from a higher viewpoint.
Colson, you just went wildly, right? That's good. Let's give it up for Colson.
I could make video of it on YouTube.
Okay, great job. Let's give her a round of applause. Chad, what about you?
I'd like to search and rescue, deliver supplies.
Search and rescue?
Yeah.
Deliver supplies, that's actually where you can help the world. Let's give him a round of applause. Chad, you're the last one, so I hope they didn't shoot one of the ones that you, that you banned my...
Architecture.
Architecture, huh? That's pretty cool. That's a great, that's a great opportunity. And then, we can also, we talked about air and ice, like helping like fly in a plane. You can use that stuff like that too. So, um, do you guys like the drone club?
Yes.
Yeah, what's your favorite thing about it?
Flying.
Flying, okay. Flying all the way. Mr. Gruber got to tell the teachers that day as they were coming in. So even if they thought they were, the halls about to ask if there were ease, like, but you guys didn't hesitate to say that was correct. You guys didn't really have to. I was a little nervous. I was going to purchase some hard hats, but you guys came with it, so very proud of you. Okay? Anything else, Mr. Gruber?
I'm going to do that shot.
Does the board or anyone have any questions for that?
How much do those cost?
Uh, so those are very expensive, like a 4K model, so they are probably around like a $299 range, pretty much.
Do you want one, Ron?
I'm just, I'm just trying to see if it'll fit mine.
If they can go over miles away with a problem and return the home button feature that if they accidentally get too far, if they need to do this, we get the home button and it'll come back to them. They're certain of laws, for sure to fill, like you have to have a valid license to be able to like downwind flying and flying in case they run their cities and things like that. They could do a recreational, like horses like that, a visual event.
Yeah.
We bought one more expensive one that we can take video out and things like that. It's been cool. We've been able to have our school events and get live video footage of it, like our dojo parties, our Halloween party, we posted a video and like had it out there and just, you know, videotaping the kids as they were all around the circle and things like that. So it's been a cool thing to have for our building as well.
So what's the, what's the future look like for us? Is there a drone club yet in the middle school?
I think, you know, that's one thing, you know, before Mr. Van, I think he took his other position, you know, I told him that we're starting this and we'd like to continue it into the middle school. So whoever replaces Mr. Van, we'll definitely have that conversation because I think this is something that, you know, as you get older, you can get different licenses and things like that and actually get paid to, you know, go through houses. If you look at a house for sale now, it's all drones going through the house and 360s around the room and, and people are making good money doing that. So it's definitely a conversation and, and, you know, I know when Kelly and I sat down and I said, "Hey, can we start this new club?" And what do you think? I mean, that was one of the first things that we talked about is how, how will we continue with K-Lo. Anything else? You guys did a great job.
This is crazy. I was going to say, I think it's flying now.
Yes.
Yes. Linda's like, she's on my head.
It's like a hundred movies.
Yeah, yeah.
Just kill everybody or something. No way. We got to run.
Yeah.
Don't be surprised, next meeting.
It's a little bit narrow right there. Got it. Yeah! That was good.
Yeah, it was real good.
Thank you, thank you guys so much for coming. Thank you, Mr. Gruber. I know this was a busy night for you, coming from a scrimmage.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you. Yes, good luck. Thank you, guys. That was awesome. Thank you, Mr. Gruber.
I have a big agenda. I'm going to have to go back to you. You're more welcome.
And thank you for coming and bringing your students tonight. That was awesome.
Thank you.
Yes. You know, it's interesting, I was gonna, I was just thinking about how we're doing the building assessments through AVG and how they brought their drone out to do all of our roof stuff.
Oh, yeah.
So they actually like sent the guy out and they were like, we gotta, we have a guy on staff who does drones, like he's, mans that and he comes out. So you don't have to like get up on a ladder anymore to like go to the top of the roof and, you know, you can take pictures and all the photos, they can go right in. It's just so cool what technology can do now.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be fun. I kind of want to learn how to fly one now.
I think you should.
I'll join the club.
Take the course, tell.
Right, I'll take the course. I'll jump in.
Um, okay, we're gonna move on to our administrative reports and we have our Cogga Valley Career Center rep, Linda O'Neil. If you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight, we're so happy you're here.
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
I can't tell you how excited I am to follow drones and, uh, keep cases.
I know, that was precious. Let's do that.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this evening I'd like to begin with the CVCC Student Withdrawal Report from the 23-24 School Year. I'm sending copies around for you to look at. It's a very, very interesting report and the data, well, first of all, let's just start by saying that Independence came out very well in this. They, the kids did very well. We had very few withdrawals for us. But on the front of the paper, you see that there's 150 students withdrew during the 23-24 School Year. And of those, they're saying that 51.3% of the students of the 150 were male. So it's pretty close, male and female. And if you look at the bottoms, the bottom part of page one, it says there that the biggest number of students that didn't return of that group, 52% of them were seniors, did not return for their senior year. So they didn't finish the program. They started and, and the report goes on and it's very, it's a really good report because it tells you why. They go on and explain what, the reasons why. So on the next page, I'll let you review this, but these are the number of students that withdrew by program. So if you look down, you'll see the largest number was Health Careers, but that's also the program that has the most students in it. So, and so does Media Tech also and FIRE and EMT, which I thought, I was surprised with that many 11 withdrawals. But I, I just think this is good data to have, so I'll let you take a look at that real quick and review that for a second.
Linda, can I ask a question? Do you know the data of how many aren't able to go on because of academics? Like that don't pass to the next, to the 12th grade or is it by choice?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Say it again.
So these withdraws, withdrawals, are they students that choose to no longer go on or does it also...
You'll see this later in the report.
Okay.
Just a few seconds.
I apologize.
No problem. You see there on the next page, it shows that 4.7% or seven of our students withdrew. And then in the pie chart, it shows you five of our seniors withdrew. So we have a very small number there, which is great, which means that our counselors are doing a good job with helping them find the program that they want to be in. On the next page, it allows, it tells you there, students' reasons for returning to the home school district. So there you see, the biggest percentage, 51.3%, said they didn't like the program change in the career path. Now remember, this is all the students that are there. This is not just ours. But they do break that down later. But the biggest reason is they didn't like the program and the second reason, biggest reason, 7.3% was they, they wanted to stay at their home school with their friends, which is not uncommon when you leave them in the middle of the school day. On the next page, not that one, but the one behind it, it shows you Independence because these are ranked alphabetically by schools and it gives us our seven students and the reasons they left. I should have numbered these pages. They weren't numbered and I didn't think to do that. But if you go on that second to the last page, it says Independence and you can see one left for a medical reason, two wanted to stay with, at school with their friends, one was an IEP team concern, and three of them didn't like the program or they didn't want the career path that they chose. So I think that's really good numbers for us, actually. And, and I'm really, apparently when they go back, CVCC does not take this data, the guidance counselor back at the school does. So when they return back to their home school, they meet with their counselor to get reacclimated into the academic and then they ask them then, "Well, why were you leaving and whatnot?" And then that data is fed back to CVCC.
Linda, pop ahead. Do you remember how many students we have total from our district that go to CVCC? I know you gave us that.
Oh, boy, that's a good question. I, I, I want to say, do I want to say seventy-something?
Okay, okay. For junior and senior?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I, I'll have to check that. I'll get back to you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll let you know. I, I knew that and then I don't know that because I have so many numbers in my... But seven students, I, it's only 7%, so, I mean, you can do the math backwards, but it's, I think that's pretty good.
I'd also like to see like how many students from Brexville go? How many students? Because I know because of our size, it's like two, have two spots per program. So...
Right.
Five of our, you know?
Yes.
What is that compared to, comparatively to Brexville? Who has, you know?
A bigger district.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that's a good point. Very good point. Okay, the other thing I wanted to go through this evening is, I wanted to show you the things that are pending board approval. Tomorrow we will be meeting for the Course Studies. And most of these are renewals. They are renewals because these programs exist, but they do a really nice job. I've been reading over them. There's seven of them and they're lengthy and I've been looking at them and reading them. And tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday, we will meet to have discussion about the contents of all of them. So I think they're well done, they're well designed from what I can see. They've got all the pieces, parts they should have in curriculum. And then down below that, they have the textbooks they'll be using. So again, this is not necessarily for public viewing in the sense that it's not board-approved yet. It's pending board approval, which will come at our next meeting. But I did want you to see that because by the time I see you again, this will be long over. So we'll be meeting on Thursday to discuss this. And then I wanted to talk, just a second, about the information we received on the career specialists. You heard me talk about them in the past. It appears that they gave them the option as to whether or not they wanted to be full-time or part-time because they are part-time. Some of them want to be part-time. So as a result of that, they gave them the option. And so it appears that three districts will have half-time specialists for the next upcoming school year and we will be one of them. Independence, Garfield Heights, and Twinsburg. And then in the 25-26 School Year, it'll be full-time. So that is my understanding of that. So, and I think that's probably fair because I think from what they were indicating is that those teachers weren't prepared to go full-time and they wanted to stay part-time if they could. So they're giving them a year to work that out and then the following year, they'll go full-time or someone else will step into those, excuse me, those positions. So I, I, I thought that was a reasonable situation for them to be in. We will be approving the CVCC school calendar for the 25-26 School Year. I will provide a copy for you once it's board-approved. I wanted, I just wanted to mention that CVCC will see a reduction in state funding, like a lot of, a lot of, all, most, I think all of the school districts except two, approximately 250,000 in the second year of the budget. But CVCC has prepared for that. They knew that was coming, they expected that. And so over the last eight years, they have been preparing for it and they feel like they'll be fine with, even with the reduction. So that was the good news. And I think the treasurer there is exceptional. He does, I think, a really, really good job and so they've been preparing over the years for that. So that's the good news. But they do plan to prioritize like all districts do with expenses in terms of what they continue to offer and what they do with different programs and projects and new things they initiate based on knowing that that cut is there. Student highlights, last week, March 10th and 11th in Columbus, the Business Professionals of America, BPA, competed at their various groups and CVC sent 37 students. So I thought that was tremendously good. And 13 competed at programming and software development and 10 competed at Network Academy, Computer Network Academy, and nine students did medical administrative specialist and five competed in digital design. So these are kids doing their thing, loving what they're doing, enjoying it. And I was reading over the comments all the kids made, they just love those competitions. They just really do. And I'm so happy that our, our teachers make the effort to get them there. So it was good to hear that. Independence High School student Victor Walchanowicz attended the Regional Officer Training Institute and he is going to serve as the president of Skills USA. He was elected and when they were down there, they had a chance to speak with legislators and staffers and, great job for Victor. You remember, I brought Victor to you last month when he was student of the month for that area. So that went very well for him. And the last thing I have for you is Mia. Mia Ricardo, when you read her story, it's such a sweet story. You know, she had, she had a personal tragedy in her life medically and she went on to do, decided she's going to go into the medical field because of that. And her plan is to finish there, to move on and get her credentials to be a registered nurse and hopefully go on and get a master's or maybe even an MD for pediatric oncology. So she's, they just can't say enough about her at CVCC. Finally, upcoming dates, Thursday, March 20th, the National Technology Honor Society Induction Ceremony is at seven. I'll be there for that. It's a board meeting night there as well. And then I don't have to tell you that spring break is the 24th through the 28th. I saw the buses roll down the street today and I thought, "Oh, it's getting close, it's getting close." So lots of things going on over there and happy to share with you. So, any questions?
No, this was great information tonight. Like this was, it's really interesting, like it's interesting to see like why they withdraw. Like it's nice to know that they do these like exit interviews...
Right.
To just find out the why behind it because a lot of times, you know, kids will leave and then you don't know like what's going on, if it was the program, if it was a teacher. So this is really great information, so thank you for bringing it.
And I think it's important feedback for the home school to know.
Right.
And Mia, in her little thing, she talks about how much she appreciated the Independence counselor that had her in that direction because she didn't think, she wanted to go to CVCC. And once she got there, she saw, you know, this is going to be the jumpstart of my career.
Right.
So, yeah. And then to know why and helps you direct them and guide them and the same for Beck by us. So it's good information to have. And I think the parents obviously want to know. I mean, they know because the kid is coming home and talking about what's happening and what they like and don't like. But it's equally as important for the educator to know.
Right.
So, yeah. I thought that was an excellent report. I did compliment the superintendent on it. I, I thought it was meaty.
No, I agree.
Offered good information.
I know, I just sent it out today, our board reports, but Mr. Janatovic shared in his report that 26 of our 10th graders were accepted into programs at the Career Center for next year.
Okay.
So 26 attending and all of them got, since there's only two spots for each school into the program, each of them got their first choice program, which was nice. But more importantly, he talked a little bit about the current seniors who are currently at CVCC in a program and are on job placement and the fact that so far this school year, nine of our students are in job placements. They've earned over $47,000 while doing their job placements this school year.
That's amazing.
And it's also impressive that the cumulative GPA for these students is 3.35 and between the nine of them, they're taking 11 AP or honors courses. And he also mentioned that Independence is one of the school districts that attends CVCC where they have the most students in the career program, but then attending college after.
Yes.
So our students see the value of both, not one or the other, but seeing how those that can connect between doing something, you know, and getting some skills, earning some money, and then still going to college and then capitalizing on that experience. So.
My sister, I think I shared, is a general manager of a steel plant and she hires down in Columbus, CVC students and they make tremendous money for, for kids. I mean tremendous money. So to your point, that they, they can make a good, good little start to making a living. All right, thank you, folks. Have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Linda. I appreciate that.
Do you want, you want this back, yeah?
Next, Mrs. Dow with her report.
Absolutely. So I have a presentation tonight and really I wanted to put it up there so that the community and folks in the audience could see it. I just wanted to go over with you all about the biennium proposal budget. And it's interesting, Mrs. O'Neil already mentioned it for the CVCC and how it'll affect Independence. And then also at Choice Scholarships, obviously that's been quite a discussion point amongst, amongst folks lately. So I wanted to highlight a couple of those things. I wanted to highlight a couple of those things. And then in my actual treasurer report, just so you know, there's an attorney general grant that we're receiving. And so I appreciate Mr. Dryling's work on submitting it. We, it's for safety and security enhancements. And we'll, we already received the money actually. So we'll be doing some wonderful things with professional development opportunities for different classifications to be more ready in times of need and security systems. So it's pretty exciting for us as a district. So I wanted to explain that and then get into this presentation. The state foundation proposal, so I'm sure many of you have been hearing news reports, media outlets, all these things that yours five and six of the funding formula are going to be phased in, which is a blessing. We were concerned that maybe it wouldn't continue to be phased in because it was only guaranteed for years one and two. In the first biennium, it was passed in. It was only guaranteed for three and four. In the second biennium, it's passed in. Here for the third, we're seeing a final phase in of that. One of the things that's concerning in that phase in is there's no update to the cost inputs. And we're using the fiscal year '22 cost inputs still in this proposal. Those are the same inputs that were used in '24 and '25. And we'll get to what those mean in a few slides here. So but that is outdated information, right? That's over two years old information that we're using to base our calculations on. So the proposal's also reducing funding guarantees. However, we're lucky in our district that we're a formula district, not a guaranteed district. So that really won't impact us too much. But overall, it impacts many districts in the state of Ohio. And we're going to see a hundred and three million dollar decrease in education funding over this biennium compared to last biennium, which means 56 and 59% respectively are going to see less state funding across the state in fiscal years '26 and '27. Another bright spot is that there's a $4 million proposal for bus driver training and enhancements. And that the annual bus driver training requirements will move up to six hours annually and expands access to advanced driver training. And a $30 million grant in funding for bus safety. No information's been given about that and what it looks like and what it might cover. At least I haven't seen any. I don't think you have either, Tom.
No, but I'm thinking about bus safety. I don't know what you're saying. I have a good idea for Columbia.
Perfect. I, I don't, I don't think that we've seen any kind of, well, not I don't think, I have not seen any guidance about it yet, what it might do. Just another thing that it also is proposing to create a principal apprenticeship program and contributing $5 million to that annually. The proposal's also providing grants to districts who want to do in-house student education or student driver education programs instead of privatized ones. So that, that is definitely different from several bienniums. Transportation is seeing the most adjustment, to be honest. It's, it's proposed to increase to the state minimum share of transportation to 45% of it and 50% in fiscal '27. So when it started in '22, it was only at 25%. So transportation's seen the slowest phase in. They've worked on phasing in the base cost at a higher percentage rate. So we're going to see transportation likely doing that. Currently we're at 41% of the state minimum for the amount we get, going to 45, going to 50. So. And they're also looking at, can we update the weights for students attending schools outside the district? That is really, really complicated, I'll be honest, for this essentially the privatized transportation services that need to be offered. And that is much more complicated than what it would appear on state, on the, on the face value here. So the state of Ohio provided 42% of edu, this is just an interesting, interesting view of this. In 1995, the state provided 42% of education dollars. Then the Deraulph case came in and said this funding mechanism is unconstitutional, as we all know. The current proposal's only to provide 32% of education funding. So in 30 years, we're going down 20 or 10% in funding. Less than what we had as state share 30 years ago. So I, I think that's an interesting view of what the state funding is for schools is being viewed at down in Columbus. 90% of students in the state are going, are attend schools that receive only 70% of the funding. So the guiding principle, as we all know, of fair school funding was, what does it cost to educate a student? That's what the state share should be based upon. And as you see, if you're going to remove the state share of that, you're eroding that general principle of that. If the crutch is what does it cost and we're not going to update in cost inputs and we're not going to fund it at the same level, you're eroding that basic principle as time is going on. So the fair school funding plan relies on these data points to determine funding and more, but just in a nutshell, it's property valuation, it's district household income and cost, base cost inputs. And base cost inputs are things like student teacher ratios, salary cost, support costs like leadership, operation and co-curricular and extracurricular activities. And when you hold them at a fiscal '22 level, but your property valuations, as we know in '24, increased dramatically, you're driving down that state share index on districts. So what you're doing is you're inflating your valuations to what it is currently, but you're not updating salaries, operational costs and things that schools have to do. So in the formula, it forces more schools to go to a 10% state share index instead of higher if they were to adjust the, adjust the inputs. So now in the proposal, you'll see 50% of the districts receiving less state funding because they're going from maybe a 20 or 30 or 40% state share down to the 10% minimum. And as we know, I've, I've talked about this before, that Independence is at the 10% minimum. Fundamentally, this is pushing more to the tax burden and pushing the tax burden to our local tax base, which is not ideal when we're having property valuation anomaly that we just had going on across the state. So putting the funding split, when, when they updated in '24, the base cost inputs along with the property valuations, the split of state-local was 4357. So pretty reasonable. And that was close to a 50-50 partnership between state and local. In fiscal year '25, only capacity inputs were updated, base costs were not. So this made districts appear the wealthier, reducing the state share funding, pushing people onto the 10% guarantee or 10% state share index. And now that split is 3961, pushing it further away from a true partnership of 50-50. So our, the current proposal is 3268 and this fiscal year at 3961. So you're seeing that split being less and less of a partnership each and every year. So what does this mean for us in Independence schools? Recently, a news media outlet said that we were getting a 15 and 13% increase in fiscal years '26 and '27 respectively. So when you look at that data, what does that mean? Yes, we'll receive more funding. However, our state share base cost, which is the cost to educate, is only increasing $2,576 in '26 and $2,077 in '27. So it is 15 and 13% sound high, right? If you look at that, but 2,500 a kid and 2,000 a kid, it does not sound high annually. And it's not even per kid, it's annually. Where we're seeing the largest increases in the restricted funding line of transportation, that saw a large bump that you can see was 50,000 in '26 and 54, 55,000 in '27. Because they're continuing to increase that percentage of phase in. And then additionally, it also increased 61,000 and 15,000 respectively, or 16,000 respectively. And that again correlates back to special ed transportation services and preschool education services. So we're going back to transportation is our largest driver of what's increasing our state funding on the current model proposed at, at the level. So then when you see our total annual foundation estimated this year is 1.1 million, going to 1.4 and going to 1.5. So I just want to put it in context of where we're increasing and why. And when you get increases in restricted areas such as transportation and additional aid, please recall, you can't use that for any other purpose. It's restricted to that nature. So you, you can't use it in other areas. The current base cost per pupil, so what does it cost to educate a student, that basic principle? Currently, the state believes it's $8,241. We get 10%, so we get $824 per student, which is 69% of our state foundation. So again, the partnership is, is, is not 50-50 and it's moving further away from that. So as you hear so much discussion going on about this, it's really because we're hoping people will reach out to representatives down in Columbus to say, hey, what can we do to get that partnership back to more of a 50-50 split instead of widening the split to local tax bases? Cause then what it also is doing is now generating a lot of different legislative proposals on property tax reform and how that might look. And to be honest, there's so many bills kind of being floated in different ways. It would be a whole nother discussion for another time that was just a speculation at this point. So I don't know if there'll be any tax, property tax reforms, but certainly as the burden keeps shifting, you're going to see a need to, to have that be discussed down in Columbus. So I just want to point that out as we go. The other topic I'd like to just bring up because it's gotten so much discussion points and it is very pertinent to our district is Ed Choice scholarships. So how does it affect the biennium? How does it affect school funding? What's going on? So the proposed double-digit increase in funding to the Ed Choice program is coming at a time when public education dollars is being reduced statewide. So as we all know, everyone kind of talks about budgets and buckets. A bucket is only so large and contains this much money. So even at a, at a biennium level or state level, they have their budgeted amount and then they're splitting it up. So if we're decreasing and Ed Choice scholarship is increasing, that again is driving that partnership split further apart. And a couple of things about the Ed Choice scholarships in the privatized schools is that there's no state share percentage applied to charter community schools. And they're not subject to the same regulations, unfunded mandates and compliances that oftentimes public schools are. So they get the, you know, as they continue to get public dollars, they also don't have the same public, I would say accountability or responsibility that public schools are asked to do. And school choice is not new. However, the amount of funding being allotted to them, I think is what's, is what's catching people off guard or being new to people. The root of Ed Choice was to provide an opportunity for students at underperforming schools to attend other schools. So I mean, this has been around for a lot longer. It's just becoming more and more discussed about as state funding's being decreased and their, and their allotment went up. So when you look at what the poverty levels are for the proposal in this budget for '25-26, you'll see K8 is a scholarship amount of 6,166 and 912 is $8,408. And it goes along, the chart shown here is how they determine it. But what does that mean is that in House Bill 110, which was the, when Ed Choice came about in the, in the last two bienniums, that was in fiscal year '22 and '23. That's when we saw the first expansion of it and K8 went to 5,500 and 912 went to 7,500. Last biennium, we saw another expansion of those poverty lines requirements. And it went up to 6165 for K8 and then 8407 for 912. So the data in the bienniums is showing that public dollars are being allocated more to scholarships over time also. So in Independence, and I wrote these numbers down because you can't see them in the chart. In Independence, we have in fiscal year '23, which is the light blue, we had less than 10 scholarships offered out of our district or taken from our district. Of which they, we can't determine what was low income and what was not. So because the data is not available. Then in '24, we had 81 total scholarships taken not for the district. And in '25, this fiscal year, we have 141 scholarships out of Independence locals. So you can see that we have seen exponential growth in families taking advantage of the Ed Choice scholarships. Of which the low income qualified in '24 was eight of the stu, eight of the 81. And in '25, it's seven of the 141. The rest are going to not income qualifying families. So meaning on that chart, you saw that they get less and less as their income levels go up. So that, that's what that means. So in conclusion, just for what's happening down in Columbus that will affect us, we see more polarizing pressures than ever coming on funding in the state education's budget. And we see a lot of, I mean, every day there's some kind of news outlet story being pushed about it. So the final phase in of an existing law is under scrutiny, which is kind of unique to scrutinize it now when it was determined four years ago that this would be the allocations coming forth. And we're seeing a shift, like, I mean truly the likely shift to more expansion of a Choice Scholarship over time. The current tug-of-war for public dollars, the state is experiencing high property taxes placing more pressure to provide relief, as I talked about earlier. And public education is funded on our local tax base. And our local tax base is statewide is vocalizing displeasure with their property tax bill. So as we go through this, we'll see how all the public comment was being taken last week and this week or two weeks ago and this week. So they're doing their public comment period now on what people are thinking. I know a lot of treasurers and superintendents were down in Columbus giving testimony, trying to promote the story of what it means to our students and what services and opportunities they get with the funding sources we have available to just try to encourage any kind of consideration to keeping that partnership closer to 50-50 at all possible. So that is where we're at with our Columbus state budgeting and Ed Choice Scholarship amounts. Any questions on that?
Jen, when you said that there's a reimbursement, it was your first slide or two that you had on there. Is that for services that are rendered for those that are earmarked for special needs kids as an example? Is that after the fact, you submit a report to them, this is, this is our population and this is the cost of the services that were rendered and then they, you get a reimbursement? Yeah, go back. Yep. Oh, you had it right there.
Okay.
And then it's earmarked for that, for those services that were rendered? Or is it given to you in advance? Or how, how is that?
It's given to you monthly, twice a month over annualized amount. So they take the annualized estimated amount and you get it two payments a month. It's based on your EMIS data though. So it's current students. And then those services of transportation and such. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That was a very helpful PowerPoint. Great information on there too. So thank you. I know it took you a lot of time.
Thank you so much.
Hello. I'd like to start off by thanking Chief Riga, Assistant Chief Don Reese, Lieutenant Austin Dapsis for their generous donation of our Stop the Bleed bags they and the training they provided to our staff. This was possible from a grant they had received. And the training was very well received by our staff members. We received 50 Stop the Bleed bags and they were dispersed, dispersed throughout the district. We weren't able to get every single classroom, but we'll work to include more as we go. We're just really blessed and thankful that they were able to provide those for us. And, and really learn how to use that. You know, hopefully we don't ever have to use those things, but it is nice to have those safety precautions in place. Jenna talked about the grants we received from the Ohio, the State of Ohio's Attorney General's Office. It was, the, the grant was specifically requesting funds for use towards Alice training and two-way radios. Anytime we have these grants, we've received these grants for the past several years. And we've used them for a variety of things, anywhere from training. Training's always been the consistent theme. For the, as long as I can remember, there have been safety grants available and really surrounding themselves, you know, with equipment or personnel. And there's a wide range of what you can use it for. We're really fortunate to have a great relationship with our police department here. And so in talking with Chief Butler, we had decided it would be great to be able to get another police officer trained in Alice training. Cause what's nice about that is we provide professional development for our staff and keep them apprised of some of the strategies and approaches that we're doing as it relates to the Alice philosophy. So him and I have, you know, like I said, we've had discussions and so we're looking forward to sending another officer. The other area that we're trying to expand upon our two-way radios in our district, it seems something simple, but you know, we've, I started purchasing two-way radios several years ago because we previously were using almost like Walmart walkie-talkies. I don't really have any better way to explain it. No shout out to Walmart or anything, but just a real simple radio system. We have high-end radios that are able to communicate with our buses, communicate from school to school. And so they're, they come at a price. And so anytime we've been able to do grants or, you know, earmark safety money from PI, I've been using it for that. And so we will purchase several of those as well. Want to give a driver update. On our agenda tonight, we actually have another driver who comes to us fully trained. And so that process is much quicker. She's available to drive for us in the morning and we're really excited about that. The other two drivers that started training a while ago, we're anticipating mid, mid-April to early May that one of them will be ready because the other one has just signed on to be trained as a substitute driver for us. The other one is looking for a full-time position. So, you know, better late than never, I guess. Would have been great in August. It's also good in April and May too. So that actually concludes my information and some of it's in the report that you guys will read. But that's what I wanted to share tonight.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kogan?
I don't really have a lot to update. We're getting into, it, it seems like it's hard to believe that we're almost into April. We're getting into, it seems like it's hard to believe that we're almost into April. And so, we're continuing our curriculum work. We have our math and our science, and our ELA teachers are going to be continuing meeting. Math is looking at some materials the next time they come together. And then, same with science, so excited about that. And then, ELA's going to be working some more on just kind of identifying what our block looks like for ELA. As I've kind of become more familiar with the district, I think one of the things you're probably going to see is a change in the middle school schedule as it relates to the amount of time in those core classes. You know, recognizing that our middle school has fifth grade in it, you know, 40 minutes for an ELA block isn't long enough. You know, they go from the elementary school where they kind of have almost like a 90-minute really time to do the reading and writing. And then, they transition to the middle school and we just have it at the 40 minutes. So, we're going to be looking at how we might shift that schedule to give a little more attention to especially math and the ELA block. So, excited about doing some of that stuff. It'll continue into next year, but I'm excited to think we may be starting the school year with science curriculum maps and science materials, you know, from K through 12, and then also starting the year with a math curriculum. Primary school's been using MyMath in the middle school, kind of using some SendGage, but really haven't had a focus on a new curriculum adoption in a while. So, excited about what that will do for our math program.
Any questions? Thank you so much. All right, move on to the public participation portion. It's the policy of Independence Board of Education to hear public comments at the board meeting. The public is invited to speak to any of the agenda items and other school topics at this time. Comments should be limited to three minutes. We have the podium available if you'd like to go up there to speak.
Don't all run at once.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Looking at approving the minutes from our February 4th special meeting and our February 18th regular meeting. And our finance report from Jen.
The Treasurers' report is pretty self-explanatory as it is each month. However, the cash collections of February show a lower-than-anticipated amount due to the differences in how the advances came in for real estate taxes. After we have everything booked in our March settlement, which just came in Friday afternoon, we should be seeing exactly where our cash collections are. And I would anticipate them to be more of where they were expected to be. So, March's and event month reports will be much more indicative of where we'll be for the May forecast for cash collections and revenue generation. So, I'm looking forward to closing March to see that. The appropriations, the main appropriation change that I'm asking for to submit to the county auditor is for the grant to fund it and let Tom and his staff get going on what they want to purchase. So, I'd like, that is a big change there that you saw. And then, the acceptance of the grant fund to accept the Attorney General Fund, and we'll receipt it accordingly. And then, planned document approval for 403Bs and 457. This is, truly, this is the annuities that staff voluntarily contribute to for their personal savings as they go through their career. And it's a courtesy that is done most every place for public education. However, the planned documents are IRS compliance and have to regulate into their codes. Anyone who reads IRS codes, I give you a lot of credit because they are really long and cumbersome. But one of the core ingredients of IRS compliance is to have your planned documents updated and board-approved. And the last time they were updated was 2008. So, we're just overdue to have these into the current IRS regulations and compliances. And this is the step to do that with. The other thing that we're able to add by getting us into current IRS compliance is IRS now allows a 403B in public sector, a Roth 403B in public sector. And our current plan design does not allow us to offer it to employees, and we've had several employees reach out to me personally to want it. So, once we have this done, we'll be able to develop a Roth 403B as part of our plans and offerings, and that will go into effect soon thereafter. So, that's exciting for the district. So, that's why those are on there and what's happening with them. Tom kindly mentioned about the donation of the Stop the Bleed supplies, which is so gracious. And then, we have one now and then that we need to submit for approval to pay that off. So, that is my report.
Superintendent, recommendations?
Board policy, this is your second and final reading for the Board of Revision Complaints and the care of students with chronic health conditions. You'll see a resolution there for power for schools. It's for electricity. They go out and, you know, they'll try to get us the best rate, so we will sign on with that. You see a student overnight trip proposal. This is for a trip that has already happened. It is our wrestling team, they went down to States. We had, for the first time in a long time, we had students that actually qualified for the States. So, that was pretty cool for them. But you'll see that on there. And then, you'll see an inter-agency agreement for transition for young children and families. And then, also, you'll see the annual ESC Educational Service Center Agreement. As you know, we utilize them for some of our staffing and other services, and so, they send us their kind of agreement. And so, you'll approve that as well. And then, under Personnel, pretty self-explanatory. Any questions on that?
Happy to see the bus drivers.
Yep. Again, just to kind of, just throw this out there, I know we have our Dean of Students posting and we have our middle school principal posting. Both of those, at the present moment, have about 62 applicants for each of those positions. Some of those are overlaps, they've applied for both positions. And we've been getting, all of us in administration have kind of been getting people reaching out to us and recommending people that have applied. So, we're really optimistic about the candidate pool for both of those positions.
Can I ask how the ESC substitute system has been working? Have we implemented that yet?
Yes. So, Mr. Ebert, a little bit of a slow start. So, interestingly enough, we had, and I have the numbers, but we had, you know, our set of subs that only worked for us. And then, they were invited to join the ESC program, and then, they could still work for us. And we had a lot of those subs who didn't respond to go and log, like, sign up with the ESC. But I'm kind of looking into that because I don't know that they were also regularly subbing. They were on our pool list. I just don't know if they were coming. We're also trying to look at if we lost any of our subs, that after they signed up for ESC, because what happens is we're in a consortium with a bunch of different districts. Our pay for sub-pay is not the worst. It's also not the best. You know, there are districts who pay more than we do. So, now that they kind of have the option, there might be some subs who are willing to go to another district and get more money. So, I've asked, actually, I just emailed them today. I've asked for how many new subs that they've actually seen take jobs in our district. I want to know the percentage, the percentage of our fill rate, as well as where we fall on that list of salaries, so I can really see and look at that. And then, also, I've asked if any districts are offering any incentives to subs. So, in Olmsted Falls, I know after your fifth time subbing in the district, you actually move up on the pay scale a little bit. So, it incentivizes people to keep coming back to the district. I'd want to see how many districts are offering anything like that, and if that, too, could be something that maybe is why a sub is choosing to go somewhere else. So, I think the positive thing is, is that I think it will get better. We joined in the middle of the year. I think subs kind of already had their favorite, you know, places. They were kind of already there. Mr. Ebert has rolled out the coffee mug and coffee and tea. So, when he gets a new person, it's like a big deal. I think he probably welcomes them on the PA and tells them they come back.
They do what they are supposed to.
Right. Come back, come back again. So, we're all trying to make them feel welcome when they come. So, I do, I'm hopeful that it will get better over time, a little bit of growing pains.
So, do we not fill any ourselves? Is it, can they only go through?
Correct, it's only through there, yep. Now, that being said, if we have our subs who we like and they've put in through the ESC and we know they're kind of our people, that the moms, they like to come to Independence, we still call them if we're having an issue. What I did kind of thought, I didn't realize that OST does this, is they actually have a person who in the morning, if we aren't filled, they go and start calling subs in the system that don't already have jobs to see if they can help us with, hey, Independence has a couple of positions not filled this morning. And I think Jen mentioned that, or Barb mentioned, that we're seeing the issue with the non-fill more for those teachers who are calling off that morning. Right? So, if it's an advanced absence and they know and they're putting it in, we have a higher fill rate. If they're calling off at 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, that fill rate isn't great. So, you know, we always say, I mean, yes, it's best if our teachers are here, but it's kind of one of those, like, if you're going to bed and you're not feeling too good, like, take the day. Just because waiting until 7 o'clock the next morning, we're usually not getting subs. So.
Sure, thank you. And move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Approving consent agenda items G1 through J4 as presented, including any amendments presented. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Section L, Board of Revisions, complaint filings.
So, each year by March 31st statutorily, you have to decide if you're going to file any complaints against, they're called Board of Revision Complaints. And what it is, is when folks sell their properties, their value versus the auditor office's value versus their fair market value, and the tax is associated with that. So, when it is significant enough that the board and the board's council feels that we should pursue it, is the only time we're pursuing these. And we have not, we don't pursue them against residents, their commercial property. So, these are the five that triggered the threshold that we'd like to file the complaints against. And the first step to doing that is having the board's approval today. So, there's five, as you can see, on different parcels and different ownerships. And once we have the board approval to that, we would move forward with trying to, really, it's about just securing the current tax value, tax dollars we're getting, to try to preserve our funding to the district instead of just letting the lower value stand.
Section M, new business.
We have to have a motion for that.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't see it's written.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay. Motion to vote, please.
So moved.
Call roll, please.
I would love to.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Section M, new business.
No, it's fine.
You have two policies before you, which you're going to have first read and then the vote for the second. That is the Parents' Bill of Rights. This was put into law, and I will be sending out a communication to families in regards to this parent bill of rights. You know, most notably, it talks about the fact that when students go to see a counselor at the school or they go to talk to a teacher about certain things, that parents have to be notified. And so, you'll see in here, you know, A through E, which mentions those instances where parents need to be notified. It also talks about instruction and, you know, sexuality content and things like that where parents need to be notified before, you know, students are exposed to that. Not that I think that that's happening. But, and then, parents would have the opportunity to opt out. So, basically, this is a new policy. So, this is not, this is not replacing any policy that we had, it is a brand-new policy. The second one that you'll see there is the sample resolution for, to adopt the new special education model policies and procedures. You'll see that there were two choices there. One was if, they had asked districts to adopt it by the end of this year. A lot of districts went ahead and did it right in September. There have been changes since then, so they revised it. And so, now, they're saying, option one is if you haven't already voted for the new model policies in September. Or option two was, if you did already vote for it, you're now amending that. We're option one because we hadn't placed it before you yet.
Thank you. Do I need a motion for that?
No, that's just information.
Okay. Informational items, some upcoming events. End of the third grading period is Friday, March 21st. Our kindergarten registration is Tuesday, April 1st, and Wednesday, April 16th. And our April board meeting dates are April 7th, a work session at the High School Media Center. Are we meeting there?
We are meeting here because it will be the AVG presentation and the assessment of our buildings.
Okay, in the media center, thank you, Kelly. And April 15th, regular meeting here at the media center as well. Section O, Board Member Discussion. I know Mr. Bernstein has something to share.
Well, I want to give a plug out to the play this weekend, Sound of Music. Just from the pictures on Facebook, it looks like it's a ditto of the movie. I also want to plug in, the Athletic Boosters has a reverse raffle coming up beginning of April. It's important that we support them, as well as any booster clubs. But over the past, I'd say, five years, they've donated at least $200,000 towards different items and different pieces of equipment to the baseball field, originally to the football turf field. So, they try, they try to get all these fundraisers in just to build, build up items that, to help the athletic department take it off their hands because of the prices going up and some of the wants that, some of the coaches want. But that's, they've done a tremendous job going about that. The last thing I wanted to say is, I attended the cultural fair over at the Civic Center the other night, and I was quite impressed. I missed last year's, but I couldn't believe how many people were coming out of that gym. I, I'm glad the fire chief wasn't there, county. And then, the food samples, I tried to be first in line, but I wasn't. But I want to give a shout-out to Melissa and Avery B., who talked about Peru. And I think Melissa was the fourth grader or sixth grader, Avery was the second grader. And I'll tell you, Avery came up to me like I was Santa Claus and couldn't wait to describe and tell me all about Peru. She just had those twinkles in her eyes and just was so enthusiastic about talking about Peru. I just had to stay there and listen. So, good job to them, as well as all the other participants. And that is all I have.
And to that point, I think we all need to give Ms. Hill a round of applause for the cultural fair because it was like a royal wedding on steroids, just with, in terms of, I could, I text her the next day, I, like Mr. Bernstein, was not there last year, so going there this year, I was like, oh my God, the organization that had to take place for this. And I know she had a big hand in that, and I just wanted to give her a round of applause for that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and I don't want to say if you could top it next year, but.
I know, no, thank you. And it truly is such a team effort. Mr. Ebert, Mr. Vannick, our city, Jess Heiser, Irene Kalal, like, it was awesome. And hearing those bagpipes, like, I just, I welled up. Like, it was such a cool moment when all the kids processed in. And it's so special to have kids, you know, that probably aren't even going to interact or maybe they're siblings, you know, and some of them didn't want to interact with one another. But it was just so cool to see them together and see both the sixth grade and the second grade teams working together, and just our city, you know, being involved with it, too. So, thank you very much for the accolades, but truly a team effort. So, thank you. Okay, anything else for board discussion?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
I feel like I've been hearing the same thing. Are we working on a district calendar?
Yes.
I've heard, like, from the reverse raffle to the choir and vocals being at the Monsters' game and the same nights and the play was supposed to be. So, I know we've got a lot on our plate, but I know a lot of parents would just appreciate.
Making sure we don't overbook things and double-schedule.
Yes.
Yeah, and so that is not something that has historically been really done, per se, and so this will be the first year, and it is a huge undertaking to try to get everything because you need to have the play, you know, your orchestra dates and everything, so we're going to try to, the communications director, a friend of mine in Olmsted Falls, I said, can you send me your Google Doc that you would use every year? And I was so glad I was out of that, and it was between the principals and really more the, you know, the administration, kind of not me. But yeah, so we're going to try to push that out and see if we can get everything lined up as best we can, so we don't, we don't have those things. It is difficult for parents if you have conference night and then a, a performance, or if they're trying to do a fundraiser, and then we have competing things, so. And the other thing is, if you don't have things on the schedule, because I don't know necessarily if the Monsters' game was something that could have been scheduled, you know what I mean, at the end of last year or came up from the beginning of this year, but it's kind of like, those should be kind of the, every once in a while that happens, but not have it happen as often as I think it does.
And I think us as parents, like, we only know what we experience at home, and I can't tell you how many times, like, our seniors, especially the girls I feel bad for, that have prom on the day of an AP test. You know, like, why are we not seeing, those AP tests are pushed out the year before, you know what I mean? So like, how are we not looking at those things and being made aware and say, hey, can we, check this off, check this off? We can't have our, you know, you know, just dealing with some of those things. And I know athletics, that's a whole nother issue, you know, but our big events, our play and our, you know, concerts and all these things need to definitely be on there because we have them scheduled so far out, you know?
Yep, agreed.
Thanks, thanks for bringing that up. We're going to move to approve the consent agenda.
We did.
No, we did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's done.
We're moving to adjourn.
We will not be going into executive session tonight, which is not necessary, so we will motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll?
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?